Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers and is open for public attendance and participation. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Silman.
Here.
Commissioner Gill.
Here.
Commissioner Noor.
Here.
Commissioner Sandu.
Here.
Commissioner Brookman.
Here.
Commissioner Dale.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Okay, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, and Commissioner Noor, would you lead us, please?
Salute, pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment on items not on the agenda. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select a representative to express the opinions of the group. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be normally allowed five minutes to speak. Do we have any comments from the public on any items that are not on the agenda? Okay, perfect. All right. So, in a reminder, members of the public may address the Planning Commission on items of interest that are, again, within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements, and we do have a clock for three minutes. So when you hear that go beep, you've got to sit down. So do, again, we have no comments at this time. Planning Commissioner, we need an election of the 2023 Planning Commission Vice Chairperson per Section E1 of the Planning Commission bylaws. Open the, I'm going to open this item to the commissioners for discussion and recommendation.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Brookman.
We have a nomination for Commissioner Brookman. Do we have a second?
I would like the second.
All right, we have a second by Commissioner Gill. Let's do a con, huh, con, let's do a vote. Roll call vote, blah, 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 blah. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dale.
Aye.
Commissioner Brookman.
Aye.
Commissioner Sandu.
Aye.
Commissioner Noor.
Aye.
Commissioner Gill.
Aye.
And Chairperson Silman.
Aye, thank you. We just want to have him practice a little bit, so we're going to do some roll call votes. Just kidding. Okay, well, welcome, Vice.
Thank you.
And when I, there you go. So, agenda modifications are to the planning commissioners and staff if there are any changes to the agenda. Nope. All right, no changes. So let's approve the agenda. Roll call vote. Is that correct? Am I?
We approved the agenda.
Oh, never mind. See, I'm just, all right. How about approval of minutes? Minutes from the February 8th, 2023. To the commissioners, if there are any interest or anything on the minutes? Any questions?
Motion that we approve the minutes as presented?
Okay. Commissioner Campbell has approved, or first, the minutes?
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner, thank you, Dale, Mr. Dale. All right, let's conduct a vote to approve the minutes. We do have to do that. Right? Oh, we don't, I'm just reading my notes, and it says, "conduct a vote," so. All right, well, since we're all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. You good? Okay. All right, we're going to get down to business items. All right, we have a consideration of development plan, DP 2202, Home Two Suites by Hilton, located at 1441 E Onstott Road. And we're going to have Ashley present.
Hello, commissioners, good evening, everyone. Happy to see so many people in attendance. This is exciting. So the first item of business before you today is a development plan for a Home Two Suites Hotel by Hilton. And my presentation tonight will discuss all you need to know about the project, what staff has done to analyze the proposal, and then we will end with a recommendation to the council. The purpose of this item is to consider the development of a new three-story hotel with 103 guest rooms. I did want to make one clarification, that on your staff report, it says 102, but this is for 103 guest rooms at this new hotel. The proposed project is located on East Onstott Frontage Road, so it's north of Target, kind of at the northwest corner there along Onstott Frontage Road. The APN is listed in the presentation, and the parcel size is approximately two acres. The property owner recently recorded a lotline adjustment to adjust the lotlines here, which resulted in a two-acre parcel. Currently, the property is zoned for general commercial, it's in our C3 district, and the general planned land use designation is regional commercial. So those, the zoning and the general plan are consistent, and this type of use is permitted in that location. The reason that we're before the Planning Commission tonight is based on the size of the project, so it's a development plan review based on the project being over 35,000 square feet. So, the applicant has proposed to, proposed to develop approximately 61,000 square feet of hotel, so it's about a 20,000-square-foot footprint, but it will be three stories. Like I said, there will be 103 guest rooms, there's a meeting room, exercise facilities, as well as outdoor space for a pool, spa, and then like patio barbecue area. There will be onsite parking that meets the parking standards in the municipal code, and this parking number, 122 stalls, includes ADA parking, EV parking, clean air parking, they've got the gamut of parking there. And then, of course, there will be landscape areas as well. Staff analyzed the project to see how the proposal is consistent with neighboring uses. As I mentioned, the zoning and general plan do support this type of use, and it is surrounded by other commercial-type zone districts, and then some higher-density residential along the north. As you can see on this map, it is an undeveloped area, but we didn't perceive any incompatibilities with this type of development. There was a traffic study prepared for the project, and they analyzed five key intersections to look at the impacts, or the potential impacts, of traffic from this development. And the, I would say the main thing that was established is maybe some concerns about how will people know how to get back onto Highway 99, having to go to P's or back to Highway 20. So there's a condition added that the developer should provide off-site directional signage to kind of guide people towards where they can access the highway. The traffic from the project will result in some minor delays at intersections, however, levels of service will not change and will continue to meet city standards. The proposed development, of course, we were looking at the design of the development, that's a big part of a development plan, is to look at the site design, the building design, how it is going to meet our existing design standards per the municipal code, and then also how we can elevate that as much as possible through the development plan process. So you can see here a rendering of what the proposal will look like. Some of the elements that are included are recessed windows to add a bit of variation. They're going to have decorative walnut lighting instead of wall packs, that's conditioned. Then they'll incorporate different materials, different colors, some stone veneer around the columns, et cetera, to kind of give variety and texture to the development. These renderings just show additional perspectives or additional views of the proposal. One thing I wanted to point out, maybe, you can see here they're proposing a trash enclosure as well. It will be covered per municipal code standards and designed to match the building. And they're also proposing, I'm going to say it wrong, a drop-off spot where you can, you know, get to the hotel and unpack your bags there. So that entry, that grand entrance, the columns will have decorative material wrapped around it, so it's not just a standard metal-looking column. Here you can see that on a different visual, and then the, the pool and outdoor spa area is here. So they're proposing a CMU wall with an additional glass element, so it kind of raises, adds a bit more privacy, but doesn't look, it kind of adds some variation, so staff, staff thinks that that adds, you know, it's a nice design feature that they're proposing. This is a closer look at the outdoor space. They are proposing a pool and a spa, but that will be separated from like the outdoor dining patio area, so they have a glass separation here. And then on, I'm not great at this clicker, on this side is where the barbecue space, they have a fire pit, seating area is proposed, and this is all enclosed by the CMU wall with the glass feature along the top. This is a perspective rendering of what you would see if you're driving on Onstott Frontage Road heading south, or if you're driving on Highway 99. There will be some views, of course, of this hotel from Highway 99. Highway 99 is elevated there, so it would be more looking down, so we made sure to add in elements regarding screening of the rooftop materials, also differentiation of the roof line to kind of make it not only look appealing from ground level, but from elevated view as well. The applicant also provided a landscape plan. This is a requirement as part of a development plan review. The conceptual landscape plan that they provided does meet all of the landscape requirements per the municipal code, with street trees at 30 foot on center as required, and when they, after this project is reviewed by the Planning Commission, if it is approved, they would have to get a building permit. And through the building permit process, it will be a more detailed landscape plan that shows how the proposal will meet water-efficient landscaping requirements, will meet all of the more detailed elements for, for any type of commercial development. So the, the building permit review would go through planning, building, public works, the whole gamut. This project, staff has performed a environmental analysis of the proposed development and have determined that it is categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA Section 15332 in fill development. There are several different elements in the SEQA guidelines that highlight when a project can meet certain exemptions, and I'm happy to get into the details on that if anyone would like to, but the gist of it is that it's in the city, surrounded by other development, under a certain size threshold, and that it's consistent with the current general plan and zoning. Development plan, for the Planning Commission to, to approve a development plan, there are certain findings that are required. So the findings are outlined here in the presentation and also in the staff report that was made available to the commission as well as to the public, it's on our website. If anyone wants to view any of this material, it's on our website. The staff has analyzed the findings and provided evidence as to how this project does meet the required findings. And based on that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing and make the necessary findings to adopt an amended resolution, because 103 rooms instead of 102, for the Home Two Suites Hotel project. So, at this point, I would like to open it up for questions from the commission. We do have applicant representation, I think, perfect. Kelsey, correct? Jenny, sorry. Jenny is here, she's with the project applicant team, she's available to answer any questions if needed, and you can, of course, direct questions to staff.
Hit the button. All right, are there any questions from the commissioners? Not found at this time? Go ahead, Stacy.
On your traffic signs that you're suggesting they put up, are you going to do Queens Avenue, the Frontage Road to Queens Avenue, and then you have everybody making U-turns? Are you going to do Washington to Queens, or Washington to Greater Queens? And then would that require a light at that intersection of Queens, I mean, Grand, Washington?
The purpose of the traffic signs, I will say, Ben might have more to say, but the purpose is to avoid people taking Onstott to Queens and doing that U-turn.
Is there any more questions? I have a question. So Butte House Road, turning right there, I'm terrified. I mean, you know, there is a hotel, so is there any plans for that, or? Sorry, my eek.
So Ben Moody, City of U.C., Public Works Director, hat. And so there was traffic analysis done, there was some concerns that came back. There was definitely interest from Caltrans and from the city with that, with the Frontage Road, it's really hard to get to and then get back on the highway and off the highway. And so what the traffic study looked at is that there might be a potential during peak hours to have a queue of two, which, which isn't ideal, but there is the capacity in that middle turn lane to do that. The one, the one advantage a hotel has is that the traffic doesn't usually come all at once, it's, it's spread out. And so, and Caltrans had a lot of concerns, and our police department also did, and it was more focused, as Ashley stated, at Queens, because people love to go up there, cut across that, that median, kind of do a U-turn. And so we looked at if we needed to extend that median to try to keep people from doing that, but it really would just mean that people do a U-turn a little farther down. And so it's hard to prevent people from breaking the law, but if they want to, and so really, based on the traffic levels and, and how the frequency occurs, it didn't impact those adjacent intersections at a point where it caused potential safety issues. But it was definitely, hey, we need to put some signs that says Highway to the Right at Queens, you know, so when they, or at Washington, so when they pull out, they hit the Frontage Road, we want to turn down Washington, then get up, then go up to Gray, then come back around. Not that everybody will follow that, and it probably depends on whether Google Maps does, but that's the effort we're going to try to make.
All right, well, then I'm, nope, you're good. All right, so I'm going to open it up to public comment. Is there anybody here that wants to talk for the project? Anybody here against the project want to speak? Okay. I'm going to give it, I'm going to close the public comment, and I'm going to go back to the commissioners for a vote. Anybody want to take it on?
Make a motion to approve Development Plan 22-02 with the change in verbiage to 103 rooms for the property located at 1441 East Onstott Road. Parcel number 51-040-002.
All right, Commissioner, I don't know why I want to just, Brookman is going to make a motion, and I heard?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, and Commissioner Noor made a second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Dale.
Aye.
Commissioner Brookman.
Aye.
Commissioner Sandu.
Aye.
Commissioner Noor.
Aye.
Commissioner Gill.
Aye.
And Commissioner Silman, or Chairperson Silman.
Aye, thank you. Okay. All right, so we are on, all right, we're moving on to Consideration of Development Plan DP 22, uh-oh, did I miss 06? Am I missing a page? I think I'm missing, hold on. We just did this one. 103. Got a second, Ashley? So I go from, this one has six on it, so that's actually five, and then that's six. Okay, no problem. No, that's good. I just want to make sure I'm not on the wrong one. Okay, so we're going to do a consideration of development plan, DP 2206, Garden Grove Apartments located off of Garden Highway. And we're back with Ashley.
All right, thank you, everyone. So the next item before you is another development plan, similar to the entitlement process that was done for the last project, but this one is a residential development plan. So the item before you is for Garden Grove Apartments located on Garden Highway. You can see here on the location map, this proposed project is located in the Richland neighborhood off of Garden Highway, and as I mentioned, the purpose of our, purpose of my presentation tonight is for the Planning Commission to consider Development Plan 2206 to allow the development of a new three-story, approximately 51,000 square foot, 50-unit, affordable senior apartment complex. As I mentioned, the project is located off of Garden Highway. It's where there, there used to be like outdoor rec space, soccer fields maybe in this area, just south of the Richland neighborhood. It's approximately three and a half acres, and the, with the development of 50 units, we're looking at a density of about 13 dwelling units per acre. So when residential projects come forward, we have requirements in the general plan that development has to meet a certain density. I'll talk a little bit more about that in my presentation, but this one is about 13 units per acre. The proposed use is permitted in the existing zone district and general plan land use designation. These maps here show that the general plan land use designation is medium-low density residential, and the zoning is R3. So the, one, one kind of key point I want to mention on this one is with item nine tonight, you'll also be hearing a little bit about this location, because the city is, in order to maintain compliance with our housing element, which is a portion of the general plan, we're going through a general plan amendment and rezone for certain parcels. This three-and-a-half-acre parcel is included in that bundle. But I do want to make it clear, it's, it's more or less included to make sure that the zoning and the general plan are consistent, because right now, we're at kind of the mid-level density in the general plan and the high-level density for the zoning. So historically, staff has analyzed dwelling units per acre in this, in this area on a gross acreage for the entire Richland neighborhood, and if analyzing for the whole about 50-acre Richland neighborhood, this project meets the density requirements as is, and as proposed in item nine, if the, if the general plan and zoning are consistent, the project meets the density requirements as proposed. So Doug will talk more about that, but I just wanted to bring it up, that you will see this location again tonight. This project is for 50 units of senior housing. It will be affordable, so rent restricted, based on a certain income, I think it's 30% of median, median annual income. They're proposing 50 units, three stories, there will be a community center, landscape areas, a pet space as well, kind of like a mini dog park, community garden, and onsite parking. Staff analyzed the, the neighborhood, and there are no perceived incompatibilities of use. It is adjacent to a lot of residential development in differing housing types, single-family, multifamily, et cetera. And on the south, there is like a, sorry, on the south, there is a light industrial kind of commercial zone. And the Planning Commission may remember that a couple months ago, an applicant came forward with a project for a self-storage project, and this is directly south of the proposed development. The, the applicant, Regional Housing Authority, has coordinated with the adjacent property owner, and they've discussed how the treatment of the shared property line will go. They're in agreement on that. This shows you the site design, but I wanted to bring out two things that I think are extra cool. They will have outdoor patio space and barbecue space, as well as some kind of covered patio, so there's a lot of space for people to, you know, community space to gather together, have a coffee, et cetera. And then the community garden and pet area, which I think is a really unique feature that they're providing. The building design was a big thing that we looked at. It's designed with contemporary architecture and a neutral color palette. The, the, during our initial review, staff asked for additional design elements to be incorporated, to kind of break up the facade, things like inset windows or window trim, variated roof line, and that's something that the applicant provided in the supplemental submittal that they provided us. And I also want to note that there will be no balconies facing Garden Highway. There will be balconies involved with this project, but they will not be fronting Garden Highway, and in the lease agreement, there will be a requirement about needing to keep balconies orderly, no towels overhanging, et cetera. Here's some visuals of the design. You can see they're using neutral colors, variating the massings. And this is the view that you would see from Garden Highway. So it's kind of offset from Garden Highway because of the strange triangular shape of the site, but if you're driving down Garden Highway, this is most likely what you would see. Here are some additional visuals, you can see the covered outdoor patio space, the balconies as well. And the landscape plan, so the applicant provided a landscape plan that staff analyzed and found to meet the required landscape requirements per the municipal code. They also provided a variety of imagery to show what type of landscape they're going to have, which I think is a great addition. They're proposing a variety of different fruit trees, I think mostly in the community garden section, some trees, some low bushes, some ground covers, et cetera, a nice, a nice mix of, of plants to really make the space a place where someone would want to live. All right, so this project is very similar to the last one, because staff reviewed it and determined it to be categorically exempt under the infill exemption as well. As I mentioned before, I'm happy to get into that more if anyone has any questions, but it is, as I mentioned, categorically exempt from SEQA. The same findings that are required for the last project, the development plan findings, are required for this project. So staff has analyzed the project and has provided evidence as to how it meets the required findings, and based on that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission conduct a public hearing and make the necessary findings to adopt a resolution determining the project is categorically exempt from SEQA and approving the Garden Grove Apartment project. Thank you.
All right, commissioners, are any questions? Absolutely. Commissioner Noor?
Nice presentation, thank you. You mentioned that, so that, that would be west-facing, right? That would be facing garden?
Yes, facing garden. It's kind of catty-corner garden, it's not directly parallel, but it's more or less facing garden.
But did you say that they, the builder or the designer will eliminate those balconies facing garden?
They won't be eliminated, I mean, the, the balconies are not directly fronting gardens, so they're kind of offset, so I think that's where we mentioned they won't be directly fronting Garden Highway, but these balconies will have the requirement to be kept clean from unnecessary balcony equipment.
Thank you.
You have a question? Yep.
I noticed on the map that it, there's a Phase 2. Is that something that you can speak of so far? Is it related to this?
It is related, the applicant hasn't given us any additional information, I think they're just reserving that land for a potential Phase 2 in the future. But I did want to mention that we have the applicant here on Teams, so Gus Basera from RHA should be online, and Kelsey Stiles, I think is her last name, is also here representing the architecture team, so if you, maybe if they want to comment.
If they can hear me. Yeah.
Gus, hi.
Hi, Ashley.
Hi, Gus.
Hi, members of the commission. No, at this point, we have no plans for Phase 2, like Ashley stated, just reserving the land, but no, no, no development plans at this point in time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gill, do you have any questions? No? All right. Commissioners, Brookman?
Two questions. This is going to be just south of the
This is going to be just south of the soccer fields they currently have there at Richland Housing. It is the soccer fields.
It is the soccer.
Okay. And then the next question, it looks from the pictures here, these will be almost identical to what's already there at Percy and Garden?
It will be similar because it's also, I think, at Percy and Garden, it's three-story as well. So it will be similar. It's a different color palette, I think, but similar build. It's, the property owner is the same.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question. Is there an elevator? This is senior affordable housing. Just kind of curious for that poor person going up on that third floor.
Gus, I might let you respond on that because I don't remember off the top of my head.
Yes, Chair Silman, there is an elevator at the property.
Excellent. And then when we're talking about that soccer field, when you drive by, it's like a big dip, right? Is that what we're talking about? So obviously, that just gets infilled and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, during the building permit process, so after, after Planning Commission, if this is to be approved, then the applicant would have to apply for a building permit and, and show how they're going to solve all of those site problems and construct the building.
Okay. Well, let's open it up for public comment. Is there anybody here that would like to speak for the project? Anybody here that wants to speak against the project? Go ahead, and you'll go back to this, and there's a mic?
I don't know. I'm confused.
Okay. That's okay. Just wording. And state your name and your address, please.
My name's Mike Smith, Unity Forest Products in Yuba City, down a little bit further.
Okay.
And she's saying light industrial. I just want you to understand that we're on Epley in Putnam, right at the end, right up against the levee, just past that orchard. And I, you know, when we fire our stuff up, we're heavy industrial. You can hear it from quite a ways, and I just want to make sure that everybody knows that there will be some noise there.
Oh, okay.
Like when you're building next to an airport.
Mm-hmm.
See what happens when that happens? Everybody complains about it. So I, that's basically all I want to get on record with.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I do appreciate that. And I'm sure the applicant heard that. Is there anybody else that wants to speak? Okay.
Hi, my name is Virginia Smith, and I'm also part of Unity Forest Products. And there is an airport there, and it isn't really light industrial. We are heavy industrial. There will, I, I know there'll be an issue with sawdust. I don't, I don't have anything against, I think it's a great deal to have senior housing. We really need it, but there will be, you know, we create sawdust, that's part of our, you know, what we do. And it is loud, and I just don't want there to be any, later, people, you know, start complaining, I'm sitting on my patio and I'm getting this. We have things that mitigate it, but it's still, it's, you know, there's, there's dust that's created from many of those different businesses that are there, and just don't want it to be an issue. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am? One question for you.
Yes.
How long have, has your, your company been in operation?
Thirty-five years.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Hi, thank you. Wade Tollers, seven-four eight, Shorewood Drive. Couple of questions, clarifying questions. You mentioned elevator. Is it singular? Is there one elevator for fifty units, or is it multiple elevators?
Can you answer that, Mr. Basera? I don't know if you heard the question, is there one elevator? Is it a single elevator for one person?
Correct. I'm gonna, good evening. I'm gonna defer that question to our architect, Phil Harvey. I know we discussed two elevators. Did we put that into the design, Phil? Or Laurie, if you could speak to that, our partner?
I'm sorry, I was on mute. There is, there is one elevator, which is appropriate for the number of units that are in the development.
I think it's pretty centralized, isn't it, in the building, Phil?
Yeah, it's, it's basically right off the lobby when you enter the building.
I got it.
So, you know, that would be the easiest access for residents.
Could you, could you clarify the capacity? How many, how many can ride in that elevator at one time?
It's, it's usually done on weight, tonnage, and, and are, and most, most elevators are four thousand pounds, so.
Okay.
You know, you can basically get five to six people in there, and it's also sized for gurney, so for emergency.
Okay.
So the fire department could use it to get people out of the building if they need to.
At a fifty units, the estimated density's gotta be about eighty people, right?
Yeah.
Hold on.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, sir.
I'm not interested in, in per elevator ride. It's in the quantity of people it needs to move on a daily activity. For a fifty-unit apartment, it would be approximately eighty, eighty homeowners that live in there. Is one elevator sufficient for that traffic?
Yes.
Parking, could you please comment on the number of parking and the amount of space available?
Absolutely. So the, the parking that the applicant is proposing exceeds the requirements in the municipal code. So there are going to be, I'll have to dig through my notes. I think, let me find the exact answer for you. It's based on how many one-bedroom and how many two-bedroom. Sixty-five parking spaces. They're required to have fifty-nine per the code, and how that's calculated is for every one-bedroom unit, which I think there's forty-four, they have to have one stall. For every two-bedroom unit, they have to have one and a half stalls, and then they have to have one stall for every, one guest stall for every ten units. So we did the calculation, and that's fifty-nine that's required. They're providing sixty-five. That includes they have ADA parking as well.
Do you have any more?
What's, how do you reach the definition of affordable senior housing? How does that, how is senior housing factored in into the affordable housing view?
The senior housing is factored in because it's, it's based on, sorry.
Thank you, yeah. This ought to be the last question for now.
It's restricted to anyone over the age of fifty-five. So that's how they determine senior. And the affordability is based on a state affordability level. It's thirty percent of area annual income. So there's a certain table that, that calculates that. But if, if Gus would like to comment more, he might have a better answer.
Our maximum is sixty percent of area median income. That's what our funding sources cap the qualification at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Those are wonderful questions. Is there anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna close the public comment, take it back to the commission, and we're looking for a vote. Or a motion? Sorry, motion?
I'll second.
Oh, she's gonna do it first. She has to read it. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to determine the project is categorically exempt from the CEQA pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Section one-five-three-three-two infill development and approved development plan twenty-two dash zero-six, subject to the conditions of approval to allow the development of a three-story, approximately fifty-two hundred thousand square foot, fifty-unit affordable senior housing located off of Garden Highway.
I'll second.
And we have a first, and we have a second by Commissioner Dale. Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dale?
Aye.
Commissioner Brookman?
Aye.
Commissioner Sandu?
Aye.
Commissioner Noor?
Aye.
Commissioner Gill?
Aye.
Chairperson Silman?
Aye. And I want to say, I think it is such time for this type of unit, and I get exactly what you're saying about commercial next to residential, but I, I think that the people that are going to live there, they'll, they'll just be that much more grateful to have a roof over their heads. So I think it's a great project, so had to give my two cents in there, so. Okay, thank you very much, Ashley. All right, we're gonna keep moving on. All right, so we are now, it looks like Mr. Libby's gonna come up, but we're gonna consider, consideration of tentative subdivision map, TSM twenty-two dash oh-eight, and pre-annexation rezone, RZ twenty-two oh-seven, for Thiarra Estates subdivision, located on the west side of Tulley Parkway, across from the terminus of Bradley Estates Drive. I had to ask what that meant today. So with that, Mr., no, the term, see, they do this to me. All right, so, Mr. Libby?
Chair Silman, good evening, Commissioners, and welcome to our three new planning commissioners. Welcome to the team. Glad to have you here tonight. So, this item, Thiarra Estates subdivision map, it's project number twenty-two zero-eight, rezone twenty-two oh-seven, and environmental assessment twenty-two thirteen. So, tonight, you're to consider a resolution to recommend the city council adopt an ordinance approving the environmental assessment and the rezone of the project, and contingently approve the subdivision map, the Thiarra Estates subdivision. And the reason why it says contingently approve is because when a component of the project needs to advance to the city council, your action as the commission will not become final unless the other item is ratified. So, looking at this map, you can see the current boundary of the project, which is highlighted, as well as you'll see the red line on the map, and that delineates the current city limit line. So this project is actually out in the unincorporated county, but it is adjacent to the city limits. Now, today, if you were to look at the county zoning and general plan map, you would actually see that this property has the very similar R-one zoning, low-density residential, as is the city's pre-annexation zoning. And I'll get into some of this in a moment. So the project is just over eight acres in size, located on the west side of Tulley Parkway, across from the terminus of Bradley Estates Drive. And as I said, the project is currently located outside the city limits, but within the city's long-adopted sphere of influence. Here is an image of the map. The project will divide the property into thirty-four single-family residential lots. Project has a density of four-point-three units, dwelling units, per acre. That is a pretty typical density traditionally for Yuba City development. I will say that it was really interesting over the last twenty-four hours. I heard some, had a citizen come into the counter and was telling me about some of the, I'll say misinformation that was being raised in the community, so I'd like to dispel it right now. And that is that this is not a condo project. It's not a low-income housing project. It's a market-rate housing subdivision, single-family dwellings. So, it's not multifamily, and it's not affordable housing development. So one of the things you would see on this, on the map, is it identifies the thirty-four lot where they're located, but I would draw your attention to this area, which talks about Tulley Parkway. So you would see that the project will be required to not just improve its half width of the development, but also construct a wall along the project, the length of the project boundary. Additionally, over on Elmer, you would see the road improvements. And also, they would be required to construct a wall over on the west side of the project. So the existing pre-annexation zoning is what's called R-one X-twenty, and I know that's very confusing. It's single-family residential, but there was an overlay zone that was attached to it. The proposal is to remove that overlay and just leave it as a, as a straight R-one, and I'll go into that in just a second. So the X overlay was adopted in two thousand and four as part of establishing pre-annexation zoning, consistent with the then-new-at-the-time city general plan. But because of new policies and programs adopted subsequent to the establishment of the X-twenty combining district, makes the requirements duplicative today. And so we're proposing to eliminate the X-twenty overlay. Now with regard to compatibility with neighboring uses, the project is bordered by single-family residences on all sides. On two sides, it would be in the county, and slightly less development in, on the county side. So I would draw your attention to proposed condition number nine, because this issue comes up fairly regularly, and that condition's been added to minimize conflicts with existing adjacent single-family homes by requiring that lots one through eight and twenty-three through twenty-seven to be single-story, or if you're gonna have two-story, back-facing windows on the upper floor must be at least six feet above the floor for privacy, for the adjacent single-floor homes, privacy in their backyards. So if I back up on the subdivision map, so lots one through eight, be these lots right here, and then lots twenty-three through twenty-seven are in this location right here. And you would see by looking at the aerial that there's existing homes there, homes here into the south. With regard to traffic, because that's always a popular topic, a traffic study was prepared for the project by Wood Rogers. It analyzed the intersections of Elmer and Butte House and Blevin and Butte House. The project will generate a total of three-hundred-and-seventy-four daily trips. Twenty-eight of those would occur in the AM peak hour and thirty-six in the PM peak hour, under weekday traffic conditions. Intersections will continue to operate consistent with city standards under all study scenarios. So you do have questions tonight for traffic. We do have a representative from Wood Rogers who's supposed to be online with us tonight and could answer any detailed traffic questions you may have, as well as our Public Works and Development Services Director, Ben Moody. So with regard to approving a map prior to annexation, it's actually allowed in state law, Government Code Section six-six-four-five-four, out of which is known as the State Subdivision Map Act. It allows a city to process and approve a subdivision of unincorporated territory that is adjacent to the city, but we must condition it that you basically, you can't build the subdivision until annexation's approved. And so we've added a condition accordingly, condition number six, that addresses that. Now with regard to environmental review, an environmental assessment was prepared for the project in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act or CEQA guidelines. Based on the environmental assessment, certain mitigation measures were identified, but by incorporating those, staff is able to conclude that there is not going to be a significant impact on the environment, and recommends adoption of what's called a mitigated negative As noted by Ashley in her presentations, applications, we must make findings. These are laid out in your resolution with responses to support findings to support the rezone of this project. Now if the commission desired to deny a map, both the municipal code and state law identify that you must make one of these findings. There's eight different findings laid out in state law, and so you would have to make one of these in order to deny an application. Now, because staff is here recommending approval of the project, we don't feel that these findings can be made, which is why we've provided documentation for, a recommendation for approval. So, tonight, our recommendation is for you to conduct a public hearing, adopt a resolution recommending the city council approve the environmental assessment and mitigated negative declaration, subject to the mitigation measures, and approve the rezone. The rezone, remember, is to remove the X overlay zone. And adopt a resolution contingently approving the subdivision map to create thirty-four single-family residential lots on the west side of Tulley Parkway, across from the terminus of Bradley Estates Drive. So the project engineer, George Mussalem, is here to answer any questions, as well as the project applicant. So with that, that would conclude my presentation, and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, let's go down the line. Any questions from this side?
I have a question, and this is sort of me being curious. Where's the applicant on, has anyone started the annexation process for this project?
They have not started the annexation process, and the reason for that is because until there is an adopted environmental document, the agency that handles the annexation is called the Sutter County Local Agency Formation Commission, or Sutter LAFCO. They can't really process it very far unless they have the environmental document. So they're kind of waiting until this process concludes.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Any questions on this side? All right. Commissioner Brookman?
I'm gonna go with traffic again. At what point in time would it justify a light there at? At what point in time would it justify a light there at Butte House? Not on Elmer, but on, yeah.
That was my question.
Well, I think that there's, there's two options. Buildout of the area is gonna result in the Tully Parkway continuing being built out to the south and to tie into the light at Harder.
All right.
And so that's the, kind of the ultimate, kind of traffic solution for the area.
And that's gonna go through where that Brandon Brown's handyman service is, or whatever is right there, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Campbell or Dale? No questions? Okay.
Yeah, I.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just make sure he was good.
Uh huh.
Mr. Libby, you've indicated that there's a condition restricting the height of any windows on a two-story building on any of those lots that were mentioned. My question to you was, is there any address or anything in the conditions of approval that would address second-floor rear patios? I know it's not uncommon for a master-bedroom type of situation to have a patio off the back of that room, and maybe French doors or sliding doors. Was that?
I would say that no, the current wording of the condition would not address that situation.
Is that something that would be addressed in design review during?
It is something, the condition can be amended.
I would, I, I think if the goal is to protect the privacy of existing residences, that we, that we might want to consider adding language that would restrict any type of ingress and egress for rear patios above the first, first floor.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent. All right, I'm going to open it, public comment for, is there anybody here that wants to speak in favor of the project? Gotta give this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is George Musalem. I'm with North Valley Engineering, we're the engineers for this project. We thank you for your consideration, and we're in support and in agreement with the conditions of approval that's suggested by staff, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Campbell, did you want to ask, you're good with that? Okay. All right, so I'm, thank you. No one else? All right, I'm gonna ax now for public comment. Mary, there's a three-minute timer, so when you hear the timer, because we don't want to be here until midnight, but we are here to listen.
My name is Caroline Sayadi, and I wanted to, folks that comes with me for the Thiara Estates, please raise your hand. On the front row, we have more than 10 people here. I think the environmental, environmental assessment there quite misleading, because the way I see it, for the life and safety of the resident is not considered, because at the current situation, the outlet is the only one from the Christina Miller and Nick Court and Mia Loop, they're all coming into the Bradley Estate. As long as the Tully Parkway is not continued into Harder Parkway, they're all gonna come out into our street. During the school drop-off and pickup, we have a nightmare of traffic go bumper-to-bumper all the way on Blevin, all the way to Butte House. If any one of us, like for me, three and a half years ago had a stroke, we will be dead, and especially all those people in the Christina Miller and Mia Loop, because it will take more than 10 minutes unless they have a helicopter and it to come in. So the way I see it, I work very highly passionate for public safety, and that's what my career and I retired from, and the way I see it, please, the commissioner, think about the life and safety of the residents, because it is not fair for the people to buy in in there and then hoping that they don't have a heart attack during those hours, and then some of those mothers gonna tell you there are other than daily during weekdays of the drop-off and also pickup, they also have a reward night, whatever, PTA meeting. Parents have to park all the way to Tully Parkway to Butte Vista on Blevin. That is almost three blocks. So you could imagine if even two people have a heart attack, and then we have a lot of seniors in this housing, we're talking about more than 100 homes.
Okay.
So I really strongly suggest that environmental assessment to be reassessed, there is, there should be a very strong mitigation to consider life and safety of the residents, because at this point, we mean nothing. Environmental for what? The air? For the industrial? But we're there, we have to walk. I can't even, I couldn't even come home during those hours. I have to wait out. What happened if there is some emergency at home? So anyway, please consider our life and safety, and I thought as a public civil servant, we all need to uphold that. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's any of my neighbors want to speak.
Okay. Thank you. Who's next?
Hi, I'm Lisa Jawande, I live at 2236 Mia Loop, and just as this lady was saying, the traffic situation, I don't know, you know, how you guys assess the traffic, but at school drop-off, like 10 minutes before school starts, and pickup, and that's just not, you know, special events or whatever, there is no way, I sit on Bradley Estates for 20 minutes, parents do U-turns in the intersection to get out. If you're coming north on Blevin, you're literally sitting all the way from Turin up to the stoplight because parents can't get into the school, and if it's raining, the traffic situation is dangerous, kids are crossing the street, cars will go on the oncoming traffic just to get through the intersection to either turn into our neighborhood or to cut across to the other side of the street. Unless there's a light put in at the school or something is done with parking, it is so dangerous if there's a, an emergency, you know, cars can't even pull over. They're double parked to drop their kids off in rainy weather, people drive backwards down the road to get back to the street, it's horrible. So if you can at least consider putting in the right infrastructure with lights either at Blevin and Bradley Estates, or continue Tully Parkway all the way to Harder, at this point, it's dangerous, and adding another, you know, 35 homes or whatnot is not gonna make it any better.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, is anybody else? Yes. Blevin's, right? She said Blevin's Road.
Hi, my name is Rick Page, I am at the terminus of Bradley Estates, and the traffic is an issue, I do have to say that. And I've heard people mention maybe putting a red light at Butte House and Blevin, because it does back up quite a ways, and with people going down Butte House Road, it's hard to turn either way. That would be one option. Also, when I first moved in, I moved in in 2004 when the houses were first built, and I, my understanding was that Tully Way was gonna have two lanes each direction. Is that still something that's?
We will find out.
You know, I could add to that, so directly related to that question, the city's done a traffic model update in 2020, 2021, and Tully Parkway, it transitions at Butte House to a two-lane Parkway, so one lane in each direction. And so as Valenci was built north, we did the ultimate right-of-way for four lanes, but it's two lanes, and we evaluated it, and based on the traffic need for buildout of the city, the entire sphere, it's one lane in each direction from Butte House to Pease Road.
Okay. And I guess my last question, if the city does take over the project, is this gonna be city sewer and city water in that new division, or is this gonna be other?
Yes, so city utilities, curb gutter sidewalk, with city utilities, sewer and water.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Virginia Smith, I live at 1979 Elmer Avenue, and I have a question, what is the X20 that, what does that state that you want to take off?
So we did include a copy of the X overlay zone as part of the project packet. It lists a variety of urban improvements that need to be made, but today, you would look, you would apply the various utility master plans. So things are either addressed through the master plans or through project conditions. And so because of that, the, having the X20 overlay is just redundant. And so when projects come up and we, we see the, this redundancy, we try to clean it up, and that's what this is an effort to do.
Well, it must prevent the housing development, right? The X20 somehow prevents the housing development?
So there was a requirement originally put in for the X20 that allowed for, which I would say contradicted the general plan, which was, said you had to have a minimum of one-acre parcels. And that conflicts with the general plan density of having a range of two to eight dwelling units per acre, which this project is proposing four units to the acre. So this also cleans up that inconsistency.
Well, I ask that you don't change the zoning, and will this, will this housing development, will it also empty onto Elmer Avenue?
So yes, this project will provide two exits. So one onto Tully Parkway on the east side, and then you will see how the road system is laid out, and then yes, an exit onto Elmer.
Okay, we addressed this before, and Elmer, back in 2004, I think, David Lane lived at 1955 Elmer, and he addressed that, I would like to just restipulate all the, he was an attorney, so everything that he opposed, I'm saying the same thing, because we have the same road, it's very narrow, it wasn't made to hold that kind of traffic, and we're gonna have worse problems than Blevin's has right now. And I understand how they don't want anything else emptying onto that side, but it can't empty onto Elmer, there just isn't enough room, you'll be destroying houses that, that have existed there for many, many years, because they'll have no front yards, or very dangerous front yards and very small front yards, and I, I just think it, it doesn't, it doesn't fit with the neighborhood that's been existing there for a long time. And I also, I am concerned that the impact fees that are being collected aren't covering the actual impact of what, what it, what it's causing, it's not covering the police or the, the different emergency services that it needs to. And I think, I, I understand that they probably do want to build homes, but I think the 34 houses for the eight acres that is there is way too small, and I know it's, they, they've done that in other parts of the city, but I think we need to start not letting the postage stamp-sized lots be developed, and we need to, I know it's been done, but we need to put a halt to it and go back to a reasonable-size residential yard. Well, I, we had agreed before, back in 2004 and recently, that the Elmer Road isn't capable of handling that, the, the, the traffic that'll be there. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Devin Barber, 2218 Nick Court, the subdivision that's immediately north of this proposed development. And I just want to make note that that development has single-family, single-story and, and two-story homes, and the developer placed those two-story homes so they didn't overlook any other lots, they overlooked Tully. Because, you know, when you buy a house, the, you get to choose what views you're gonna have. Well, in this case, these, the home, the subdivision that I'm a part of, we won't get to choose our, our, what our views are, because someone else is gonna make that decision for us. So in this project, in your conditions for approval in your packet, item nine, as Mr. Libby listed, has those nine lots that have the condition of a single-story or the second-story having no window that has a sill less than six feet, but as someone pointed out, they found the, the hidden thing, that there's nothing in there about decks or French doors, doors don't have sills, that kind of thing. So my ask is that you amend item nine to restrict those select lots as listed in number nine to only be single-story homes. The engineer who did the, the parcel map sized those specific lots, you'll notice they're a little wider than the rest of the lots. I think they anticipated maybe having this request, because it's very common for subdivisions that are butt to have the, the folks that are gonna get the overlook to say, hey, you know, can we get single stories, that kind of thing. So it, it's within the commission's power to amend the conditions of approval, and again, that I ask that you require the single-story homes for those lots listed in item nine. So, thank you.
Hi, my name's Jason Smith, I live at 2033 Elmer Avenue. I have two questions. Earlier, you were stating that if this goes through, then Elmer would have improvements to it, not that I want it to go onto Elmer, but what would those improvements on Elmer
So per the city's design requirements, when a development comes in there to improve anything along that property front, and then deal with any specific project requirements due to the traffic levels. And so just to circle back a, a little bit, on typically, if a, if a development meets the zoning and the general plan land use, the department has a policy where a traffic study is triggered at 50 PM peak trips, or 50 peak trips during, during an hour. And for residential homes, typically, there's 10 trips per unit that's associated with, rule of thumb, it's about 10, 10 trips per home that's generated throughout the day. With the one peak trip, with one peak trip per home, that adds to that peak hour trip. So, so basically, we, rule of thumb, it'd be 34 peak hour trips, which wouldn't hit our threshold to have the traffic study. Staff recognizes that Blevin Road, Elmer Road, it's, it's contentious. This has been contentious since previous annexations, past potential developments in the early 2000s. And so that's why we had the traffic engineer who's here really look at that, that design, and look at the impacts to Elmer and Butte House, and then also at Elmer, or at Blevin and Butte House, to make sure what those impacts were and how they would be addressed. And so with that, they went through there, and I mean, not everybody likes to believe what's written, but really, it came down to 28 to 36 peak hour trips, depending on the AM or the PM. And so, so you're looking at about 30, worst case, about 36 peak hour trips on, developed from that subdivision, added to the cumulative, added to the existing, and then those were divvied up with about, I'd say roughly 30% that were going down Elmer of those trips. So, and then you have about 70% that are going down Blevin. And so when they looked at that, pretty much the existing levels of service remain the same from what the existing are to the proposed, which, which is really kind of consistent as to why we have that threshold for the 50 PM peak trips to look at really what the project difference is, because the, the way this is set up is based on the zoning and complying with the land use. And so back to this question, is we thought it was very important to have an outlet to Elmer because of that situation where Tully's not built out yet, not having a long cul-de-sac that would be hard to get to and then turn around through the fire department, and then also it would provide that blow-off during the school events or different things that are happening, that people could then go out that exit. And so the improvements on Elmer really are just the east side of Elmer, where we're putting in a wall up, except for, so on the very, it's, there's an existing house, a property that it's gonna do this U-shape around, and so what you're gonna see on the east side, there's gonna be this house on the corner, there's gonna be a, a wall, curb gutter sidewalk, and then the road widening to come into that intersection, and on the south side, you're gonna have curb gutter, some landscaping, and then the asphalt's gonna be extended to the existing, and so pretty minor. And then you're gonna have a wall come down with an opening with a sidewalk that goes to Elmer, so basically, folks could walk and then can make a connection to Elmer through a sidewalk path that goes through here, and then a wall that comes down. And then there, the part of the conditions of approval is they have to pay their fair share. share for future improvements to widen that road sidewalk curb and gutter, because we didn't think it made sense to build curb and gutter to nowhere or a wide road that just kind of pops out. And so really, it's minor improvements with this, with this asphalt connection on the north with some curb and gutter at the corner, and then you'll see a wall similar to what they have at the Valencia subdivision to the north. And then based on the traffic study, it remained at that level of service B, I believe. And so there was no additional queuing or striping that was triggered based on this. And that is really the ultimate goal, is to build Tully Parkway, extend Tully Parkway, where there's a CIP project through the engineering department that, that's been budgeted and that's work, that's working on to, to start to make that connection with Queens and Blevin and down to Butte House Road.
Thank you. So with traffic already being a problem, as a lot of people know on Blevin, I know you say that it's not, but during school hours and stuff like that, it does get backed up.
I'm definitely not arguing that Blevin is busy and it's impacted from the school craziness.
Are you still thinking that that 70% of the traffic is going to go down Blevin and only 30% will go down Elmer with that traffic already being a problem, even with people using Elmer as a shortcut already and going down through the orchard into Jamie a lot of the time as well?
You know, that's, that's based, that's based on a traffic engineer professional opinion, and I, I bet you have different opinions. If you live on Bradley, they'll tell you 90% is going to come down Bradley. And if you live on Elmer, you're going to say 90% comes down Elmer.
Well, I've said my piece. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate this. Go ahead.
Courtney Tasler, 1965 Elmer Avenue. So in the original plan, none of the traffic was supposed to empty out onto Elmer Avenue. It was all supposed to go towards Tully Parkway and out through Blevins until Tully Parkway is all the way built out. So I just wanted to state that.
All right. Anybody else? Oh, go ahead.
Arthur Holmes or Ted Holmes, if you know me. I'm a general contractor. I'm 100% in favor of building houses. But living on Elmer, you can't get out at 8:00 in the morning or 3:00 in the afternoon. And actually, there's a lot of days I'll go all the way down to Peas and back around because I know I'm going to be sitting at a stop sign for 15 minutes. And adding additional houses plus it's going to become a cut through from Blevin. And if they lost the last house and built a cul-de-sac and put a block wall on Elmer, I'd be 100% in favor of it. And then ultimately Harder Parkway would be built out and all the traffic would go that way anyway. So they could create a large cul-de-sac, and then it wouldn't be a problem for fire department. And it's just consideration. As far as building houses go and changing the zoning and doing all that, I'm 100% in favor of it. But the traffic coming on Elmer is just going to go from bad to worse. Normally, I leave way before that in the morning, and I get home way after that in the afternoon. So personally, it's not going to affect me. But the three times a year that I leave the house a little bit late, and it's going to become a cut through from Blevin because Blevin's such a problem. And so traffic studies all look fine on paper, but the practicality of it, I don't think it, it exists. So anyway, that's my comment.
Thank you very much. All right. Next?
My name's Dennis Miller, and I live at 1910 Elmer Avenue. And I oppose the, the entry point on Elmer Avenue. Elmer's uses a shortcut from Peas Road to Butte House. I've lived there for three years, and it's, it's like living on Butte House. It's, it's crazy, and it's, it's, people speed down that road all the time. I've called the Hybe Patrol and Sheriff's Department multiple times for speeders, and I think there's just going to be another cut through. It's just, they need to finish Tully Parkway if they want to build that subdivision. I mean, I know, you know, you're going to build houses no matter what, but that's a country road. And I bought the place there because it was in the country, but within the city. And I think you guys need to finish Tully Parkway before you consider building that subdivision and no access to Elmer Avenue because it is already a shortcut and a Speedway. Thank you.
Thank you. This, oh, I was going to say, go ahead.
Hi, Mike Cunningham, 2212 Nick Court. I'd like to echo Mr. Barber's statement regarding two-story structures butting up against existing single stories, regardless of how high the windows are going to be or anything of that nature. There's plenty of other lots available in that subdivision to build your two-story structures and allow those who decide to go ahead and buy with a two-story structure behind their backyard to do so. Also regarding the traffic, yes, Tully Parkway needs to be extended out to Harder Parkway if this is going to be built. There's just a ton of traffic, and this is just going to exacerbate the situation. Also, I have two questions. If anybody can answer the questions on what are the minimum and maximum proposed size of the floor plans and the list priced minimum maximums for those floor plans?
Staff?
So there is not a requirement that at this stage of the process that they submit floor plans? So that would come, that would come later. And as far as, I'm sorry, what was your other question?
What their proposed list price would be for the.
That's going to be dependent upon the, the product that the, ultimately the builder wants to provide.
Okay. So that will come later, and there'll be more conversations.
So does that come after it's been approved?
Yes, it comes, that's typically the way the process works, is that project gets approved, they would have to make their improvements, comply with their conditions. The map gets recorded, and then, then they would be allowed to start, start construction of homes.
So the developer, the person who's responsible for this project has no idea what he's going to charge for his houses at this moment?
Well, you got to keep in mind that the, ultimately, the housing product that is offered is dependent on a number of factors. One of them is interest rates. And to make it affordable for the particular market. So to give you just one final number that say, this is what it's going to be, at this kind of where we're at in the economy, I don't think that's really possible for, for any developer to, to give you.
So then we could be faced with homes far less in value than what we have on Nick Court.
So, you know, any developer is going to want to sell their product. They're going to have to comply with the, the city's adopted standards. And if you meet those, then yes, that housing product can be constructed.
Thank you.
Mike Smith, 1979 Elmer Avenue. I just want to, you know, say that that should not go out on Elmer because if, if you're trying to develop that road, that road is a country road. It does not have any, if, we have a lot of people walk down that road. And if you get more people coming out, out there and whatever, it will be dangerous for the, for the public. There's, I don't know, people walk their dogs down the road, they do everything, and there's no side or curve or anything for that to work on. The other thing that I would suggest is to the south of that project, you guys want to infill, I guess, is what the city. There's two parcels right there on the south side of that. If you cut those roads the way they are, those will never get the access they need unless they stay as a one acre parcel as far as building homes. And I'm a firm believer in, in leaving, leaving the zoning the way it is. So basically, instead of getting 32 homes, Mr. Tiara, he'll get eight.
Okay.
Point of clarification, that's not accurate, is it? I, I just want to make sure that we're, we're all talking apples and apples because as it's currently zoned, he meets the density requirements under the R1 zone, correct?
So two points. I think that it's important for people to recognize that today, in the unincorporated county, this project, this property, not just this site. Sometimes I include bonus material in my presentations. So if you look at, here's the project site where that dot is located. See all this yellow out here? That's in the county. That is zoned R1A, so single family residential. The A means an agricultural combining districts. But it's also general planned, low density residential. So the same density can be developed today in the county. But the reason why the applicant's coming to the city is because it's hard to develop on septic tanks and individual wells. And so coming to the city, you get the benefit of wastewater, potable water, and an urban drainage system.
Exactly. And just as a point of a clarification, in those, those low density zones, both, both in the county and in the city, the minimum lot size in an R1 zone is, what, 6,000, 5,000 square foot?
The minimum lot size is 5,000. We typically don't see that.
Understood, but I, I just want to make sure the audience understands that this, this reference to that, that property currently being zoned for one acre minimum is not the case. It's zoned for a minimum lot size of, of 5,000 square foot, both from the county perspective and from the, the, the zoning that the city has put in place as a part of its sphere of influence. Is that, does anybody have any questions on that?
Okay, hold on. Hold on.
Go ahead, sir.
Eric Chapman, or Campbell. Let's, let's take, have a seat.
In the county, your septic and your well have to be, I believe it's 100, 200 feet from each.
Correct.
Is that correct, in circle? So if you have a 5,000 square foot lot, you're not going to get that.
You're not going to get an argument from anyone at all, sir. And that, and that was my point, and I think Mr. Libby addressed that, and that's why Mr. Tiara wants to annex this portion into the city so that he can get city services with water, sewer, and those types of things. And, and to your point, you not only have to have a minimum distance between your existing well and your, your, your septic system, you also have to have what they call a MUSDA, Minimum Usable Replacement Area. So if your, if your septic fails, you have to have enough room on the property to do that. So generally, you're looking at an acre or more to do that. But to the, the point standing is that both from the county's perspective and the city's perspective within their sphere of influence, these properties are zoned to allow smaller sized lots. The issue within the county is, as you pointed out, the issue of the well and the septic and the minimal usable sewage disposable areas. So I, I just wanted to clarify that because we're not talking about a site that is zoned and designated from the general plan perspective of one acre minimum.
Okay. So let's keep moving forward. I think we've got everybody. We understand. We appreciate all your comments. Oh, do we have one more comment? Okay. All right. So if you're going to, if you are going to get up to speak, let's get everybody lined up. We'll be, go ahead. Go ahead, ma'am.
Martha Martin, 2182 Elmer Avenue. You have no idea the traffic on Elmer Avenue. Sometimes when I try to back out of my, they go 50, 60 miles an hour down there. You have traffic coming onto Elmer, you're going to have major, major accidents because no one stops. The people over on Stabler, they come down Peas, up Elmer to go to Walmart or to Yuba City. They don't come Stabler because Stabler's 25. Elmer's 35, they go 80. They don't care how fast they're going. And I object to having them bring it onto Elmer Avenue.
Okay.
My name is Linda Essex, and I live at 2051 Elmer. And that wall is on my, or right on the side of my property. That's my driveway. And I don't want cars coming down. I also don't want two-story houses anywhere I have a pool. And that's my whole yard. So I don't want people peering in. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, and we duly note everything that you're saying. All right. Is that it? Are we good to move?
Yeah. I, I ask that you don't remove the X 20. I, I hope that you will not approve this. The area is not ready for this kind of development yet. And, and I just ask that you don't approve it, please.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to close public comment. I am going to bring it back to the commissioners for more questions. What? Oh, I saw Doug. Are we ready for some questions? Anything on this side? Commissioner Nor?
I have a question that if, I imagine the city, someone's probably here that knows fire code, like, so a cul-de-sac, if that were a cul-de-sac and didn't have a pass-through, a second exit, would the fire depart, what would the fire departments take be on something that size from your experience?
Dustin off the, the memory cells here. I'm thinking the cul-de-sac, I know there is a, a limit, and, and for whatever reason, and I'm not sure if it's, it's accurate, is I've heard like 600 feet. And I think that's what the, the standard is, the length of a road end in a, in a cul-de-sac.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. What are we looking at? Maybe I missed it. On the Tully Parkway, what is the timeline on that, on the completion?
It's really undetermined at this point. It really is contention on growth and impact fees. Right now, the, the Blevin, Queens to Butte House connection, so that, that corner section to the south, so the south to relieve some stress off of Blevin, is anticipated in the next few years. And so it's, it's designed with the city, how we prioritize projects with available funding, we're finishing up Bridge Street. Walton is on the hit list, and then with us gearing up for that, that connection point. But as far as the ultimate build out for Tully, the city's collected money over the years, and we've acquired the right of way. So if you look at that on aerial, I don't know if we have an aerial view, if you look at overhead, we've collected funds and the right of way to make that ultimate connection to be a two-lane road. And so really, I think we're going to get there in a, in a relatively reasonable time after that, that Queens-Blevin signal connection. That's the big component, really doing that north leg of the signal, doing the wider sections of, of if Tully, how it necks down from where it ties into Butte House and then Queens, and then really you're just looking at a two-lane road to the north to tie into that. And so I would think that that would happen reasonably soon, but I don't, you know, it's, it's a little bit of a crystal ball, but I would hope that within the next 10 years, five to 10 years. I mean, if you want to be, but it, and this is, this is based on the city with our peak building 50 homes a year. If a major subdivision came in up in the northwest quadrant, that would trigger that, that, that need, then it could happen sooner with that development.
Yes. First off, Ms. Smith, you had made a statement about, you know, stamp sized lots, and I think a lot of us agree with you. Unfortunately, we're hamstringing with density laws by the state of California that are constantly changing, that for every low density housing, we have to put in so many high density housing, and those are state laws that the city has to follow if they ever want to put more houses in. As for everybody here tonight, we are listening to everything you say, and, and we hear every one of you. However, we do get hamstringed to a point, like Mr. Libby had said, there is a specific set of findings that we have to find one of in order to vote no on this, or we start violating property owners' rights and so on and so forth. So if we do decide to vote yes tonight, those are because the findings that we would be required by law to find cannot be found in this particular project. Okay. Mr. Libby, if you could go further with that?
So I was just going to ask your someone, is the public hearing, has it been closed?
It has been closed.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. So yeah, we can bring up the findings if the commission wanted to explore those. I mean, that's up to you.
I'll take you. The, the city report says the findings cannot be found, so.
Correct.
Thank you.
I guess my only question would probably be for the developer, for any possible findings, I guess. Is this laid out to be single story for everything if you have to adjust to that? Or?
I'll let the, the applicant address that, but I will also add that there is not a requirement in the municipal code to restrict the development in that way. I'm not saying that the city has not put those conditions on, and we've proposed that. But if someone asked me, hey, Doug, where do you get that condition from? It's from past practice, what the city has found acceptable to do. But there is no, nothing in the ordinance code. But there is no, nothing in the ordinance code that says that, you know, the standards are, you get a 35-foot maximum height. Most homes aren't even close to that. But it'll clearly allow for two stories. You meet the setbacks, you meet the maximum percent lot coverage, and you can build the home if you've got the correct utilities.
Doug, what's the minimum rear yard setback?
Minimum rear yard setback is 25 feet.
25 feet?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So even, even if you were to allow a two-story home with normal bedroom windows and a balcony, you're still 25 feet away from the fence line?
Right. There is, Ashley, what was the alter, what was the other nuance, rear setback?
The municipal code calls out the rear yard setback as 25 feet or 20% of the lot depth, whichever is less.
So, you know, traffic, 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 and I get it. I get it a lot. Is there, I'm just asking, is there, I heard, if there is a wall there on Elmer, is that even a possibility? Is that, can that even happen? I don't, I don't even, I'd just like to address that for everybody can hear, yes, that can't possible, or?
So is your question, Chair Silman, to make a cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Okay. I think that it, looking at the numbers, I think it would exceed the length that would be allowed for cul-de-sac. But like I said, we would actually have to confirm that with fire. But I will say that as part of the review of this application, it goes to a lot of different agencies, including the school district. We did not get comments from the school district expressing any comments. And it's important to recognize that if approved, this project would pay school impact fees that would go to the district to address impacts to the school. And based upon the comments you've heard tonight, it sounds like they need to come up with a better traffic plan for the school. You know, as part of, and I lost my train of thought.
A wall.
So I'm not sure if they could, you know, just make a cul-de-sac for it, but I think it's also important to recognize, and I do understand what people are saying as far as the current traffic on Elmer, the current traffic on Bradley Estates Drive, we get that. But also, keep in mind that if you are, if you are living in this subdivision, if you're going to head west, you may go out Elmer to go down to Butte House to make a right. But you either already know, or you're quickly going to find out, that Elmer is not the correct path if you're heading east, back into the city. You're going to, you're going to quickly realize that that's going to be a problem. And so you're going to, so most of the traffic, I think you're going to find, is, yes, they're going to, it's going to head back eastward.
Right.
I mean, just, that's just the natural, I mean, people are going to go on the path of least resistance.
And my other question was, and maybe this has been, is, when we talk about the Parkway, don't we have to have the houses to pay, help pay for that? I mean, it's like, it's, you know, and I just don't know if people understand that, too. It's like, we need this to build this, and maybe that's too simple? I'm sorry.
No, you nailed it. And so that's one of the struggles with explaining it, but development brings the infrastructure. It's not the reverse. There's not a funding mechanism to build Tulley Parkway without the development to come. So when development comes, they're to pay their fair share, do their front improvements, build the internal streets, and then pay their impact fees. And so those impact fees are then utilized to build Tulley Parkway. And so part of this project, they'll actually build the west side of Tulley Parkway to continue it down, you know, to finish cleaning up that west portion of Tulley Parkway, and then each home will pay their traffic impact fee that then could be utilized to help finish off the Queens-Blevin and build that intersection up. But unfortunately, development doesn't work that way. Everybody would love to have the streets and infrastructure there, and then the homes come. But you could also argue that then you're promoting growth, and it's not where it's at, and there's not, and many owners wouldn't want to pay the front development that you may not want. And so really, development brings the infrastructure.
Right. And again, that gets back to where, I don't want to say our hands are tied, but there are these rules that we have to follow as planning commissioners. And again, I don't think we can find anything other than, so with that, with that, I am going to open this up for a motion. See how it goes. Anybody?
Make a motion to approve tentative subdivision map, TSM 22-08, and pre-annexation rezone, RZ 22-07, for Tiara State Subdivision.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'd like to table that motion and ask that we adjust the recommendation to include a modification to condition number nine to exclude rear balconies and aggressive aggress points.
Do you accept that? All right. Is that legit?
It is. So during the conversation, I, yes, I was scribbling away at the, to try to facilitate in case that came up.
We do have the motion.
Okay, so if I could just, just add to the, add to the condition.
Yes.
So currently, the condition says lots 1 through 8, 22 through 27, are to be restricted to single-story construction or back-facing window sills on the upper floor of a two-story residence are to be a minimum of six feet above the floor, and additionally, shall not establish second-floor balconies facing single-story homes. And then it would continue on, or as otherwise approved, by the Development Services Director. Perfect.
All right.
If that captures it, we can include that language. Thank you.
We had a first, and Commissioner Dell, are you okay with that, for a second? All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dale?
Aye.
Commissioner Brookman?
Aye.
Commissioner Sandu?
Aye.
Commissioner Nor?
Aye.
Commissioner Gill?
Aye.
Chairperson Silman?
Aye. Okay, and just to remember, this will come back, so there's still, there's still opportunities.
So I would note, for the benefit of the public, that, so part of this was a recommendation, so the rezone portion of this will advance to the city council. And so new public hearing notices will be issued ahead of that meeting.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So I expect every single one of you to be in the city council, no, sorry. Thank you for coming, though. We absolutely heard everything you said, and we'll keep, and we'll keep looking and working on it together. Together.
Hey, you guys, stay for the next rezoning, I'll be living on Elmer.
All right, so, I want to let everybody, okay. There we go. I got to find my notes again. Let them clear out for a minute.
Yep.
I know, one first one. I saw the last one, I was real excited, and I was like, oh, lovely. Oh, my God.
It was hard decision.
Yeah, no, and thank you, because I was gonna, was gonna, and I'm like, you got it, man.
Thank God you brought up that condition, too, because that was the only thing I was thinking of.
Yeah, no, I forgot.
They had a legit argument.
No, yeah, they did, yeah.
I had a note here to reword condition number nine, but I felt like I was getting so many F-U looks from the audience, I'm like, don't look up, don't look up.
That was the only thing I saw giving the hook up.
We've got to do something for that.
That's why I tried to point out, like, hey, I'd love to live in a community of [BLEEP] ranchettes, but Governor Newsom, and it was very...
We're going to go ahead, keep going. All right, we're going to, we're going to keep going, because we all want to, all right, you ready, commissioners? All right.
So, from there, everyone, what they're talking about is they develop that housing.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen.
Sir. You guys, can you take it outside, please? Thank you. All right, we're going to get moving on. We're going to, consideration of a general plan amendment, GPA 22-03, and rezone, RZ 2204, to implement the 2021-2029 housing element citywide. Attachment two provides the location and details for all properties involved. Mr. Libby?
Yes, here we go, round four. Okay, so, consideration to approve an environmental assessment, general plan amendment, and rezone. There is the cover of our new 2021 through 29 housing element update. So for everyone's benefit, cities and counties are required to update their general plans, typically on an eight-year cycle. And so we just completed that with a lot of jurisdictions. One of the interesting points that came out is, due to the state's housing crisis, the state pushed down higher housing numbers to jurisdictions. So how that's done is called the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, which is quite the mouthful, so everyone just calls it RENA. And so RENA numbers get pushed down from State Housing and Community Development, or HCD, down to, in our area, to SECOG, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, and then they take the, that overall housing number, and then push that out to all cities and counties. And so then, once we receive our RENA, we have to incorporate it into our housing element update, and then whatever the number is, we have to include zoning that has the ability to accommodate that many homes. It doesn't mean the homes will be constructed, you just have to show on paper that you can accommodate that many dwelling units. And I like to describe it in a way of, you have to set the table a certain way, but we're not sure if anyone's coming for dinner. And so, you know, going to the state planning conference a couple of years ago, there were a lot of jurisdictions who were, just to be honest, crying in their beer, that the RENA numbers that were being pushed down, they were having to rezone sometimes hundreds of acres to meet the requirements. So for us, it was a lot less. Okay, so to get into our project, go down memory lane, the city initially adopted its housing element in September of 2021. State HCD came back to the city and said, we want some revisions to it in December of '21. And then last year, the city council adopted those revisions, and then our housing element was certified by the state on May 5th. And so then, once that happened, it then becomes incumbent on the jurisdiction, the city in this case, to go through that effort. And so the project before you tonight involves 35 parcels covering almost 76 acres. Now, initially, when you see that number, that's, that's, that's a lot of land. But I would draw your attention to kind of one area on the map, and that is the housing authority property over here. That makes up the lion's share of the acreage that's pending before you. So we have four areas that we're looking at. The Butte House corridor, the Walton Avenue corridor, the Regional Housing Authority area, and Market Street. So there's two components to this. There's a general plan amendment, and then the rezoning part. And so for the general plan amendment, you know, just about less than 2% of this land is currently identified as low-density residential. So hardly any of it. It's actually the parcels, the south parcels on Walton Avenue. Most of the property, 95%, is already designated as medium-density residential by the city's general plan. So to put that in English, that allows for development range from six units to 14 units to the acre. We do have two parcels, which are Office and Office Park, and then we have a public parcel. So all of that land is proposed to go to the medium-high-density residential, or for us, it's just high-density. So all the properties, so what that does is, because remember, 95% of the area being considered is already at a medium-density level. So we're going to change it, so instead of six to 14, we're going to go from 12 to 36. But keep in mind, we have never seen a 36-unit-per-acre development in Yuba City, ever. Okay, picture's worth a thousand words. So the left-hand side of the screen is the Butte House corridor. You can see in the upper half of the map, the properties identified, they are the currently medium-density. You'll look to the lower half of the map, they're going to change a color, and they're going to go to high-density. The map on the right, Walton Avenue corridor. You look at the property, the largest one is almost an eight-acre property on the east side of Walton, north of the Chevron Station. That's this one here. You may have heard the city's been in discussions with Habitat for Humanity for a potential affordable housing site on that property. And so that property is proposed to go to, also to R3. You might remember, just south of the Moose Lodge, there's what used to be the old Walton Fire Station, public property. We're going through, it's the Surplus Land Act for the city, and so that property is also isolated to go to at R3. And the city has also had some discussions with Habitat for doing a smaller project on that piece. In fact, I think there were at least two community meetings held at the Moose Lodge to discuss that.
Is there a proposal on that piece right now for a?
Sorry?
Isn't there a proposal on that piece right now for a senior?
That's what he was talking about.
So there's discussions to allow for that. There's not been any applications received.
I thought we were getting an application for that, too.
And so this, I would note on this sub...
That was at the leadership class, I completely followed, that's all, so, that was great, thank you.
That's right.
Move along, send the door you're looking for.
Through the chair, yes.
And you might remember, I was playing a different role. Okay.
Sorry.
All right, and so the property on the south side, remember, we mentioned a couple of the parcels are low-density, single-family residential, that's down in this area, they're proposed to go to R3. So housing authority, I would have thought, when this came up, that the property would have already been at our high-density level, but it's not. It's slated as that medium-density. But we've identified it to go to R3. It fits the, kind of what the housing authority does. And there's an overlay that I'm going to talk about in a moment that would apply to both this property on Walton, as well as two properties in the housing authority area. One, as Ashley mentioned, that you already considered tonight, and then further to the east. And then Market Street. So Market Street, this is an interesting area, because it's really a hodgepodge. You have some, you have some homes, you have some single-family residences on the east side, you have a equipment rental business. You also have, what's interesting is, the property we've identified is vacant, but just to the north, immediately to the north of it, there's an apartment complex. So we've identified this site as potentially being able to go to a high-density. It's close to the downtown, and adding residences proximate to our downtown, we think is a good thing. Okay, the zoning is going to make the zoning match what the general plan says. I'm not going to read all of it to you, the, I would focus on the upcoming here, the X29 combining district. So 14, almost 15 acres is proposed to have the X29 combining district added to it. So we have the series of zoning maps. You can see properties going from R2 to R3. I would just draw your attention to, on the Butte House corridor. So this middle parcel is actually already zoned R3, but because it has a medium-density residential general plan designation, it's restricted to six to 14 dwelling units to the acre. So the zoning's not going to change, but it will be allowed to increase the density if they could make it work. Going through the other sites, I've already said they're going to go to R3. Okay, X combining district. Our housing element program, HC7, requires us to designate a certain number of acres that can be developed, not at our, not at our, just our high-density 12 to 36, but they want to ensure that it develops at a high-density. So we're required to have it, those identified parcels be developed at 20 units to... So we're required to have it, those identified parcels, be developed at 20 units to the acre minimum. And so two of those parcels are in the Housing Authority area, which we've already talked with the Housing Authority, and they're in support of. The other parcel is the potential Habitat development, and they are supportive of that. So we, here's a picture, kind of showing the three sites that would go to that 20-units-per-acre required development. One thing that was important to the city council is that we work with property owners to kind of build a coalition of property owners who wanted to be a part of this. So staff has worked very hard to do just that. All of the property owners of these lands have given their support, except for the western most parcel on Butte House Road. Staff has had conversations with them. We've received some verbal support from the ownership trust representative, but we do not yet have that signed letter, but we're still working on it. So support letters that have been received were included in your staff report packet. So analysis, compatibility. So it's important to recognize, we are changing the colors on the map. There is no specific development proposed with this project. But we do take a look around surrounding areas, and can, does it seem to fit with the growth of the city and being able to accommodate a higher density? So if it did have the zoning assigned to it, the city is, that's not the end of the process. One could argue that's the beginning of the process, because then someone's going to have to meet the R3 development standards, often going to have development plan review, which those code sections are laid out before you. Traffic, as I said in my last presentation, always a fun topic. So this project does not include specific development proposals, so it will not directly in and of itself result in additional trips or traffic, but it leads to the potential. All sites are located on arterial roadways designed to accommodate future multifamily uses. All the roadways operate consistent with our general plan level of service standards. Future development projects will be evaluated for project-specific impacts, and appropriate conditions or mitigations will be incorporated to address concerns. Future projects in excess of 25 units require development plan review and approval by the Planning Commission. And depending on the size of the project, could be required to go to the city council. And those, and then you would also include specific requirements, look at the traffic for those future projects. And I think it's important to note that those future projects are required to pay the city's development impact fees, which includes a road fee component. So water, wastewater, storm drainage infrastructure is available either directly at the site or available to extend to the sites. The city may require additional studies, determine the capacity for existing infrastructure based on project-specific development application in the future. There is a number of general plan policies we feel that support this effort, and we laid those out in your staff report, and they are here. We did do an environmental assessment on the project in accordance with the California Environmental Equality Act, potential impact categories, generated mitigations. Staff is proposing a mitigated negative declaration with the incorporation of the mitigation measures. Staff believes that a less-than-significant impact on the environment will result. As we've talked before tonight, project findings must be made. Staff feels that those findings can be made to support the general plan amendment and the rezoning, and those are laid out in your resolution. Rezoned findings must be made, and we have offered support of those. So I promise you, I will not read that to you.
Thank you.
So staff is recommending you conduct a public hearing, adopt a resolution making your recommendation to the city council to adopt the environmental document, which is a mitigated negative declaration, the general plan amendment, the rezoning, including the X-29 combined district. Now, at the time that you decide to take action, I have a simple way to simplify all that in your motion. So with that, that would conclude my comments, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, we're ready for questions. I'm going to start with Commissioner Campbell.
No questions.
No questions?
No questions.
Thank you. No questions about this side?
Which parcel have you guys not gotten approval from out of that list? Was that the, sort of in the Butte House Road corridor?
Yeah, it's kind of the larger property right next to Mr. Paul's Market.
Okay.
It's zoned R2 today.
Okay. All right. Yes, go ahead.
Just to dovetail on that, cities are required to get the owners' permission to move under rezon, aren't they?
That's actually a really good point. We are not. Under the city's police powers that are given to it, the city can establish zoning and general plan designation as it seems fit. But the city council and staff, you know, are trying to work with the property owners to build that group.
Yeah, absolutely. I would agree with that 100%. I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page. That's a lot of requirement, and nor is it a cliche of sorts.
Yeah, absolutely not.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. This point? Go ahead.
Are you doing for or against?
At this point, let's just open it up. Yeah. Way past my bedtime.
Sorry, Wade Tollers, 700 Shrewd Drive. With the density requirements that are being adjusted, and using rough math, we're going from low to medium, middle point about 10 per acre, to high, medium to high-density, middle point 25, 2.5x increase in density per acre. And I'm curious, what are the adjustments being made to parking and other requirements to fit inside that envelope?
Great question.
So that is a great question, and that's something that limits density. Because if you were to open the R3 portion of the code, you got, yeah, you got your building setbacks, you got your height standards, you got your minimum parking requirements. That limits how many homes you can put onto the property. There's also requirement in the zoning code today that each, when you do multifamily, that for each unit, you need to provide 200 square feet of outdoor area. There's also between buildings, there's a minimum of 20 feet between buildings, so you can't, but buildings close to one another. So when you start laying those things out, it acts to reduce the potential density that you can put on the property.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
You're suggesting that it autocorrects itself somehow through all these other issues, but you also mentioned earlier today how an X-20 overlay became obsolete and got in conflict with other of these, and then you asked to remove the X-20 overlay. So let's use a specific example. What I'm calling North Walton, I believe? The one that now has an X-29 overlay on it. You made the comment earlier in your presentation that we've never seen the likes of a 30-unit-type density, but if I'm not mistaken, 217 units are going in a 7.5-acre parcel, which is just about 29 units. Right? So how are they solving that parking problem with getting 20, you know, 217 units, doing the math we said on 7.5 acres?
So the, so the, are we talking about the Habitat project?
Yeah, there's really only two X-29s on that sheet.
Yeah, so the Habitat project, they are proposing like 217 units on that. They're proposing four stories, because that's the maximum that the zoning allows. It's partially how they're getting it. But yeah, they have, they definitely have some constraints to it. We have not gotten a specific development plan into review. So some of the things that can come through that review is, when we look at it, is, hey, it doesn't meet the parking, hey, you don't meet this requirement or that requirement. They have the same access to the cookbook that we do, but we haven't received the development plan yet for formal review.
But this is a physics, this is a physical space dimension size times multiplication. You're going to eat up acreage.
Through the chair.
Yeah, even if you go vertical, right?
Question to the...
Yeah, well, so I think that was just a non-responsive answer. I think you said you were going to work through the system. The, the other question that I have on that one is, how were the X-29 overlays...
Hold on.
...determined? Of all the properties, you're required by law to get at least 10% of the property identified is overlaid with X-29. How were those specific sites determined?
Working with the property owners, one, and then also looking at the specific area to think that can they, is the infrastructure there to support the development at those locations? So using the Walton Avenue property as an example, that property is on a four-lane road. It has the, it's designed as an arterial to carry large volumes of traffic, whereas other areas that are nearby, and I'll just use the property right here, there's not four lanes there. And so that's some of the thought process, that we go and look at what the infrastructure is at that time, can they handle, and then it's a part of, do we have a willing property owner? That's a big part of it.
You had mentioned the lion's share of the entire redevelopment was actually taking place on the bottom right. Did you investigate that area to expand as X-29 as well?
So on the Housing Authority property, right here, two of the overlay sites are located there. So it is designed for that already. But yes, one of the sites was identified on Walton Avenue, and part of that is to accommodate the potential Habitat project.
Was the one down on the far south, I thought we talked about that earlier today, and it's not going to hit the density requirement of X-29.
So two things to keep in mind. The first is that X-29 isn't in effect today. The second is that you remember that the Housing Authority mentioned a Phase 2. So if the project, their project gets built out, and they come in in the future, that future project, if X-29 is put into effect, will need to comply.
Right. It changes it.
Last question, was there any other areas besides the 75 acres that were put into consideration for rezoning?
We did internally kick around a number of parcels, but ultimately kept coming back to these areas, in part because we had willing property owners.
Just to clarify, I thought you had said earlier on in your presentation that this recommendation was just a recommendation, and there is no development that was planning, but yet we provided letters of support by developers, and we picked property based off developers' interests. So it feels like it's pretty close to being greenlit for development.
So the, there is no development plan, specific development projects currently proposed. The city has been in discussions with Habitat for Humanity, and they are trying to put together a project, but there's a long way to go. One, it's an expensive project, and we're just not sure financially if that can get put together. So some of the other, you know, as far as developers, no, these aren't developers. Most of the people we've been working with are individual property owners. So we're not working with merchant home builders, we're not, like I said, the only one, if you want to call a developer, but they're also a property owner, is the Regional Housing Authority.
Okay.
Thank you.
I know recently, the property on Elmer across from Mr. Paul's was recently zoned R1 and just became R2 probably in the last year. So to go to further than that, that's quite a leap, and of course, I would rather it not. And I think everyone in that area would also agree with that.
Do you want to address that, or...
I have to bend the ear of my colleague, and I can't recall of another property recently that got rezoned to R2 in that area, so I'm not familiar with it.
I've been here a few years, and I don't remember it, but that doesn't mean my brain's working.
Yeah, I don't have any record in the last 10-plus years. There, I mean, to, to the east, up against the Mobile Home Park, that property was rezoned to accommodate, I believe, R2 and R1. You know, so the Parm Baines property, I believe, a little farther to the east, on the east side of Tully.
Right.
Brandon Brown, the east side of Tully along Butte House, that's probably the most recent rezon in that location. You know, I would just add to the, there was definitely consistent thought about this overlay. Historically in the city, R2 is duplexes, R3 is apartment complex. In order to work out that math equation, and the autocorrect, as he said, that's usually two-to-three-story apartments, because financially, you start getting into elevators, high-rises, property values, and we don't see that type of development. Where we see that high-density is on affordable housing, and that's why you see those two areas, because in the southeast corner on the Richland Housing, that matches up with RHA's proposed Richland Village project that has a very high-density. And that density was put in place because there were specific affordable dollars that came to the project to meet those state grants. And then that's also in alignment with the Merriman Village Habitat for Humanities four-story proposal to get that density. But typically, again, there's not projects specific besides potential development plans in the Richland Housing area that you see will most likely come to fruition, because there's active funding. The Merriman Village, there's definitely active effort and a search for funding, but as far as the other properties, we haven't seen development plans, and they'll come in based on when it pencils out usually, which it might be sometime, especially if utilities and costs where they're at.
And interest rates, yeah. Go ahead, sir. I think this gentleman was next.
Yeah.
Want to come up to the mic? Thank you.
John Palm, 2303 Valencia Street, which is directly north of the Mr. Paul's property there. You said that you've been in talks with the property owners, and you've got letters from everybody but them. How long ago have, or how long has this been in the process of talking to these people? Because I know that these notices came out a long time ago, and they still haven't gotten back to you with a written saying, sure, we're fine with it. So you don't really know if they are fine with it. And they said, I believe he said, that one of the reasons they're doing these properties is because the property owners were okay with it, and they've gotten, given written authorization they're okay. It doesn't seem to be the point here on that piece, particular piece of property. And all I could say is, you okay everything with that until you get something from the owners.
I know you're in contact and you're talking, I don't know where you want to state where you're at with that.
So remember that tonight, you are making a recommendation, it's not the final action.
It's not final.
So whatever happens tonight, it moves on to the city council. And so I guess to answer the question is, we would have until from basically today until up through the city council meeting, for someone, for that property owner to kind of come on board. Then if the city council chose to, they could withdraw it, remove it. And, but similarly, you know, as part of your recommendation, you could, you know, that is within your commission's purview.
Got it.
So.
Okay.
It would be a recommendation to remove it, if that's...
Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Jason. I also have a question on the Butte House section of that. Earlier in your presentation, you said, when you're thinking about doing these changes and going over these changes, you take into account the other properties that are in that area and what style zones and properties those are on that Butte House section. Can you tell me a sample or an instance of a multifamily area on that stretch of Butte House, other than on the east side of Butte House?
So multifamily or higher-density is to the east, but I would draw the commission's attention to the north side of Butte House, where there is already significant properties along Butte House. significant properties along Butte House that are already designated that medium density already. Um, as far as existing higher-density property, uh, located, uh, right here, which is the, would be the, what, the southwest corner of, of Harder and Butte House there, that's already, um, identified as, as a higher density. So when you look at the general plan or the future growth areas of the city, and particularly this area, it is slated for higher density. So it's not a huge leap to, to then say, okay, well, a couple of these properties, we want them to go to, to high density.
And again, there's nothing planned at this time. Thank you.
Next?
Yes.
My name is Matt Brighthout. I live at 1819 Romero Street, and my property, my, the property of my home shares a boundary with that vacant lot of surrounding Mr. Paul's. And, uh, I've been in contact with Mr. Libby the last few days and asking him questions about this presentation. Thank you very much for your answers, and he's, he's been very forthcoming in explaining, uh, my questions, and it's been very enlightening, uh, exchanging with him. And, uh, I want you to know that, that I get it. I understand that the city and the Planning Commission is tasked with, um, providing zoning designations to accommodate various levels of density and, uh, income, uh, variables. But I wanted to reiterate the last, is it Jason?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Jason's, uh, point that with this list of 35 different parcels, isn't there enough already that we can designate as R3 and high density and reserve the westernmost parcel surrounding Mr. Paul's Market? Because that's where our property is, and we've talked with our neighbors in the neighborhood, and I think several of them are here tonight. And I'd like to propose that the designation of the zoning for that parcel remain at R2. Which, to me, it, R2 means a two-family residences, and to me that means it's a duplex, and there's nothing wrong with duplexes. My son owns a duplex in another state. He lives there. And, uh, I wanted to add that if we add more zoning capability or more capacity to this, um, we don't want to have apartments, uh, multiple-family dwellings, apartments to be built there. Because we, in our neighborhood, we already have firsthand experience with drug dealers in our neighborhood, and there has been, um, undesirable people sleeping under the trees. Um, and there are some apartments directly across Butte House Road from our places that have had multiple sheriff calls, um, and there's a lot, there's people coming back and forth. The business that's located in our neighborhood, uh, has, has stated that there are a lot of people that's hanging out next to the walls after hours, and they've had to install security lights, um, on their building. And, um, I get it that not everybody is in a, in a multiple-family dwelling is that kind of person with social ills, but any athletic coach plays to percentages, and the percentage of, of possibility, the likelihood rises of, of things, problems arising when there's more people in a confined area. And I'd like to propose that the zoning on this parcel remain at R2 if you'd like to, um, make an amendment to the proposal.
Thank you very much. All right. I think we're good. I'm going to close that public hearing, bring it back to the commissioners for questions. Thank you.
So I think this might tie in with the gentleman's, uh, the last comment. If you look at the highlighted items and based on the state mandating a certain, um, level of, of rezoning to, to meet those thresholds, if that, one, Mr. Paul's, we're calling it Mr. Paul's, right, kind of next to his property, if that were excluded, do we still meet what the state has asked? And how, and if we have, are we just flirting with that line, or are we trying to get ahead of it a little bit?
So if that property, um, is removed or recommended to be removed, then, uh, we will still comply with our housing element. However, I would, I would just say that, um, the last significant multifamily development that the city has seen, it's hard to believe, it's like been, I don't know, 18 years ago, and it was along Boe Grove, south side of Boe. There is a need for multifamily housing in our community. Um, you know, as someone who, you know, spent their, their younger years living in multifamily housing, um, for the record, I didn't cause any trouble. And, uh, and, you know, the people, most of the people who do live in multifamily housing won't either. Um, but the reality is, is that it's been 18 and a half years approximately since we've had a, a multifamily development in our community. And we need multifamily housing in order to help solve our local housing issues.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Campbell, do you have any questions? Or Commissioner? Nope. Nope, nope. Nope, 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 nope. All right. Um, oh...
Can I say anything or not?
Well, we have closed the public hearing. I'm sorry. These darn rules, I know. Um, I guess, I, I get, I'm going to just throw this, so if we do vote and we want to pull, we want to leave R2 in that area, that is something that we can do. Now, it could go up to the council and that can get changed, so it's just...
A recommendation.
A recommendation. Okay. All right. So with that, and no more questions, looking for a motion? You don't have to read the whole thing, I'm told.
I will make a motion to adopt a resolution recommending the City Council approve the adoption of the housing element, and, well, not adoption of the housing element, but a rezon for various parcels identified by staff and staff.
Yeah, that's pretty close to what I was going to say. I was going to say make a motion for the recommended action as reflected in your staff report.
Second.
Okay, let's do a rule call vote, please.
Commissioner, Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dale?
Aye.
Commissioner Brookman?
Aye.
Commissioner Sandu?
Aye.
Commissioner Noor?
Aye.
Commissioner Gill?
Aye.
Chairperson Selman?
I'm going to say aye. And again, just a reminder that you can go to the City Council and you can appeal whatever you need to do.
So, yeah, for the benefit of the public, this, you've made your recommendation, this will move on to the City Council.
Correct.
New public hearing notices will be issued ahead of that public hearing date.
Okay. So I expect everybody to pack the room. All right, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to future items. Uh, Mr. Libby? Thank you all for coming. Basala, I can't believe you didn't get up and speak.
No, no, no. I just need to listen.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay.
Okay. So future agenda items. So we have a number of things in the works, um, several subdivisions.
Thank you, sir.
Um, a number of subdivisions are in process. We also have, uh, an additional general plan amendment rezoning for a duplex project kind of in central city, but I'm not sure if those projects are going to be quite ready for, for next month. So there is a chance that next month's Planning Commission dates will be canceled.
Okay.
Okay, so just a heads up with that. But I don't come empty-handed. So I did want to talk about, uh, for a moment, some of the things that the department is working on. So, um, as I think we've touched on with the commission previously, we are working on implementing the open counter software, which will facilitate providing information faster to applicants 24/7. You want to find out what your zoning is, you want to find out what the fees would be in order to develop a certain parcel, you're going to find a lot of that information as you sit in your comfy's with your tablet and you go to the city website. So we're excited, that's being, going through the testing phase now, and this spring, that project will go live on the city website. Uh, I should also mention the city is revamping its entire website, and so hopefully that's going to go live probably in April or May, and, um, will become much more user-friendly for both the public and staff. Staff is also utilizing, uh, grant funding for a zoning code audit to identify needed changes in the code, um, which are basically right now that are barriers to housing. And so we're, uh, working on that audit, and so that's something that's, uh, going to be completed in this year, and that could recommend, result in some recommended changes to the code. We're also utilizing grant funding to prepare, I'll call it a refresh of the general plan. General plan was approved in 2004. Um, we need to put a new coat of paint, change the tires, do a transmission change on it, and so that's what we're, we're working on with, uh, consultant Placeworks. And so that, uh, will not change the land use, but it's going to update the general plan consistent with state law. Um, it's going to simplify the general plan, um, and remove a lot of outdated information. So, but I will emphasize that it's not going to change land use, because the city put forth a real good effort in planning for not just the city, but the sphere of influence the last go-around. Um, let's see here, we're also using grant funding to develop an accessory dwelling unit handbook to facilitate ADUs in our community, and that's also a project we're working on behind the scenes that's going to be completed later this year. And then, uh, we also are working with, um, a consultant to, uh, update our development impact fee for, uh, for impact categories, roads and park and recreation. So, although we might not have any projects before you, there's a lot going on behind the curtain. Um, so with that, that would conclude my comments, and so I would open it up for the Development Services Director.
Thank you, Doug. All right, so that's a tough night here. So, um, um, I, I guess to start off, I would just say, hey, thank you, um, especially the new commissioners. It was a tough first meeting. Um, you know, there's a lot of people, um, and a little uncertainty probably as to your roles, and so please, um, don't be afraid to beat up staff, reach out to us, um, and, and be vocal, you know, um, because staff, there is a lot, we appreciate you, you with our recommendations, there's a lot that goes into that recommendation, there's a lot of internal, um, you know, just the noticing for that general plan amendment probably went on for six-plus months to go to the tribes and the various agencies, and then we wanted to make sure we extended it to get all of Elmer. A lot of times the bare minimum is only 300 feet radius, um, but we knew it was going to be an item, so there, so there's thought put into that. But at the same time, we put a little wiggle room in that we know one of those items might drop out, and so for, you know, totally respect that, the Butte House Road, um, if the community doesn't want it, the community doesn't want it, or if the property doesn't own it, um, and so we try to work that out, so we still hit this, the goal, um, and still have a nice product for the city. So, um, going forward, um, please feel free, um, to reach out and we can, um, help where we can with any questions and work through it. Um, some fun stuff, the Planning Commission Academy is next, next week.
Is that next week? I didn't get the notice.
When, I leave Wednesday. I don't know if anybody else is going, but Wednesday through Friday.
Was that the one that was canceled? It was rescheduled.
No, that wasn't it.
Oh, okay.
So I believe we have Jackie, um, and three new commissioners, Mr. Noor, Rupee, um, I didn't get the last name.
They'll come in? Oh, great.
Um, and then Justine, and then Bovin, or, or Kerry, who else, is anybody? I know Jackie's going.
Where's it located?
So it's Garden Grove, Somme Anaheim. Well, we're going to have a good time. Doug can't go, um, Ashley and Aaron are going to be going, and I'm going to, I'm going to be going too, and so we're going down Wednesday and then coming back Friday. Um, but I'll have, um, most likely we'll reach out to connect, um, for dinner sometime and then coordinate itinerary, so we'll get everybody's contact list and make sure we're all good to go.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity, for sure.
So with that, I definitely want to, um, recognize, I don't know if we introduced Aaron Brown, so he's one of our new, um, planners with the city. What, are we on a couple of months?
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe we, maybe we introduced him last time, so, um, so a couple of months, and then Jaspreet, um, who maybe you're familiar with, um, is on maternity leave for a little bit. And so, um, so the team here, you got the full, um, planning team here, uh, and our development liaison. So, um, what do I got? Sutter County Rep, and so Justine Gill has been asked by the mayor to be the Sutter County Rep. Um, logistically, that, um, has to be approved by the City Council, but with that, we also approve the Sutter County Rep. Um, so Mr. Campbell, I don't know if they've selected you. Have you guys had a meeting?
Yes, they did.
Okay, great, I'm looking for the report.
They want to have me back, they want to send me back, so.
That's, well, it's great to have you. And so, uh, most likely staff, um, Doug will be coordinating an item to go to City Council here in April that officially accepts you and, and proposes, um, Ms. Gill. Um, really, that's all I got. I, I mean, there's definitely a lot going on with a few other subdivisions, um, with growth, there always comes, um, traffic, and there always comes, um, and I want to assure you we're not rubber-stamping them, but, um, please give us your, your input. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Uh, any questions? Go ahead. Oh, I always see you going, you know, I have to apologize. I, um, you know, when I called you guys or said earlier, come on in and let's talk, it wasn't about anything to do with the agenda, so I want to make sure that that was clear to, to the, the lawyers that we have and Ben. Um, it was more of a just meet and greet, you know, because we haven't seen each other, and so that is, I wanted to state that to make sure that is relayed to whoever the powers that be. And, uh, then as far as that, I think everything's going really well. I'm looking forward to that as, uh, well for the Planning Commission. We have a lot to learn. Um, anybody have anything for Ben? No? All right, let's go. How about the Planning Commission for Sutter County update?
Well, uh, motel motels in the city and truck yards in the county, uh, we actually had a, a proposal for another truck yard, um, right off of Tudor and Garden Highway. Uh, was actually a very well-thought-out, very well-designed, uh, project that was approved. We had, so in the, in, in the county, there are, um, development requirements within the industrial zone, and then you can also do a truck yard in the ag zone. What's interesting is if you do, if you had two identical pieces of property right next to each other, and one was zoned industrial and one was zoned ag, the guy that had the industrial piece would have to pave the entire piece. The guy that had the ag piece would only have to do chip seal or, or, yeah. So there was this huge disparity. So I had asked staff to go back and look at bringing some parity between those two. Uh, we're not quite there yet, they're working on it. And it's not so much that everybody has to pave, it's just what makes sense and what works. One of the things that I, that I find ironic is you have to require the parking area where the vehicles come and go, for like the front office and where they're going to park their cars. And cars, maybe four or 5,000 pounds on average as opposed to a $28,000 rig that now gets to drive on chip seal. But anyway, I digress. Uh, but that project did, did get approved. We had, uh, uniquely, um, an outpouring of public support, so. Um, and other than that, uh, not much happening other than, yeah, that's it.
Truck yard is new.
Yeah.
Sutter County's looking up. All right, well, unless anything else, I will say adjournment.
Thank you.